Supposed to be September 17.
I had it marked on my original copy.
Okay. All right, it looks like we're on here.
I'm gonna bring it up.
Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for September 16, 2020. I'm Jim Peck, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. And it's my pleasure to read the COVID statement again. It's very popular. It takes about two and a half minutes. The Plastow Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. Notice of this electronic meeting was sent to all the butters and published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper. Plastow Planning Board is utilizing the GoToWebinar program of the GoToMeeting platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the GoToWebinar program, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting. The link to access this meeting was provided on the town's website with the notice where to email with. It is strongly suggested that you test the link in advance of the meeting to make sure you're able to access it. Please report any issues to jcashell@plastow.com. There is a raise your hand feature of the program that will allow attendees to participate in the discussion. There is also a Q&amp;A box for the public to type questions during the meeting. The public can also send emails with questions or concerns prior to and during the meeting to jpeck@plastow.com. Please note, all questions and concerns typed into the Q&amp;A box or sent via email will be read, allowed to become part of the public record. The meeting will also be live on Plastow Access Cable, Channel 17, and will be live streaming on the town's website. Okay, with that done, I'll ask for a roll call, Charlene.
Yep. Jim Peck.
Here.
Timothy Moore.
Here.
Lori Mallett.
Here.
Karen Robinson.
Here.
Francine Hart.
Here.
Jeffrey Adams.
Here.
Tom Alberti.
Here.
Greg Talion.
And John Castle.
How do you say that, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Talon.
Talon, thank you. I always, I want to put the I in the wrong spot all the time.
Like a claw.
Okay.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is the review and approval of September 2nd minutes. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read them. They should be in your package. Thank you, Charlene, for doing them. Very glad to see you here.
You need to add some more.
Jim, you don't want to do it again?
Yeah, she's still with us. I'll entertain a motion to accept them. The items in red, by the way, are just the changes to the rules. So it looks a little bit weird, but that's just to highlight the changes to the rules. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion, we conditionally approve the minutes as written.
You have a motion, a second by Karen Robinson. Any discussion?
Yes, I just have a small amendment. On the first page at the bottom, I was not present for the August 19th meeting, and I believe Tom Alberti is not a voting member, so I believe the motion passed 401 because I abstained.
Oh, okay.
So a small amendment.
Thank you, you're right.
You're welcome, no problem.
Yeah. Okay, with that amendment, any further discussion?
Just kind of along the same line in the roll call. Tom Alberti should be listed as an alternate.
Non-voting.
Same as Jeff.
Yes, alternate. Okay.
Okay, so you get those, Charlene?
I did.
Okay. With those two amendments, any further discussion? They're being done, I call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion passes 500. Okay. So let's move on to the main event of the evening. We have one hearing tonight. Last time, we had four, so we're a little happy about that. We think it will be a fairly short hearing.
Yes.
Time will tell. Let me read the hearing, and we can vote on the completeness of the application. It's PB 20-11, the completeness of an application from SNL Garage Realty LLC. The application proposes to amend a site plan to change the use of one of the existing commercial buildings, as well as the motor vehicle sales use and associated designated parking. The property is located at 157 Plastow Road, Tax Map 30, Lot 67 in the C1 District. The applicant is the property owner of record. If the application is found to be complete, the Planning Board may immediately conduct the public hearing. So before we open the public hearing, we have a staff report in our folders, and the staff is recommending that the application is complete. So unless anybody has any objections, someone can make the motion that's in the staff report.
All right. I move that the application for the amended site plan proposing an additional use of a compressor sales, service, and warehouse use, and the discontinuance of the motor vehicle sales and associated display designated parking at 157 Plastow Road, Tax Map 30, Lot 67, be accepted as complete.
Thank you, Francine, I'll have a second, anyone?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Robinson. Any discussion on that motion? They're being done, I call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions, 500. So the application is complete, we'll move on, all open the public hearing. And the first thing we're gonna do is ask Charlie to present it. I assume you're the one presenting it, since you're sitting there.
Yep. No, I've got a brief presentation, and thank you. So it looks like we're off and running. Charlie Zilch from SDC and Associates, here on behalf of SNL Garage Realty LLC. As you know, Lisa Gardella, who's sitting behind me. This is for an amendment or change of use site plan of 157 Plastow Road. I think everybody knows it better as Skip's Custom Exhausting Auto. I think you're all familiar with the site, right on 125 here, just north of the intersection of 121A. So as you may recall, we were before this board in 2018, where we were granted approval for more significant site changes, most notably the addition of a 4,800-square-foot commercial building with additional access and parking and drainage and all that goes with it. Since that approval in 2018, the site has been improved or constructed per the site plan, and it's now just about 100% complete. I don't think there's really anything left to do on it. So all the uses that were associated with that site plan from 2018 were automotive-related, meaning the existing garage. There was auto detailing, auto graphics, and the used car sales. So since the construction, some of the original plans have changed in regards to tenancy at the site, and this is the reason for this application. So I'll kind of give you a quick rundown. So this really, this isn't about exterior changes at all, it's just about changes in the tenants within the building. So, starting with the northerlymost building, that's labeled as Building A, this was the building formerly utilized by Skip's Custom Exhausting Garage. The building is now proposed to be served, or is proposed to serve United Compressor and Pump Services, whom sell service and repair industrial air compressors and pumps. So they'll take over Building A, move them right along the line. The middle building, which is the new building, that's Building B. We just about got it up on the screen. That's the brand-new building. That's where Skip's moved into, so they occupy that entire building now. That was originally proposed to be the graphics and detailing shop. So now you have the compressors in Building A, you have Skip's moved to Building B. And then Building C, the southerlymost building, the small building there, that's on the south end of the site. That was, that formerly served Skip's Automotive Detailing, they're no longer there. It's now utilized by Perfect Tract, and they're a small company that does dustless concrete saw assembly service. So there's just two employees in there, part-time, and it's used for assembly and storage of the dustless saws. And then the last building, Building D, behind that building, that'll remain as-is, it's just storage for Skip's Custom Exhaust, as it was before. So it's basically just the changes in tenancy. All the existing and proposed uses are allowed within this commercial one zone. Everything's accommodated by the parking that was proposed on the 2018 site plan, as well as the septic. So I went through calculations, you can see those on the cover sheet, for parking, for septic, for all that sort of stuff. Everything's, meets the site's needs. No other changes needed around the site or for any of the parking. And so the only other change is, my understanding is, now that we're not completely an automotive service site, you can't have the used auto sales there, so those are being eliminated. So there were to be some delineated parking on the very north end of the parking lot. I don't think those were ever delineated. So we're not gonna put those in, and they're gonna no longer have the used car sales there. So it's the, basically, the three different businesses onsite. Everything works onsite, there's no exterior site changes, no variances needed for this. I didn't have any waivers that we needed for this application. Pretty simple. No additional state or local permits are required as well, just this planning board approval.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Open up for questions from the Board. Jeff?
Charlie, could you clarify, on the bottom left, the one-way sign at the driveway, which is blocked by that legend in the corner?
Oh, that's, I think that's just, the one-way sign is there, that was provided by the state for any traffic. I believe it's the one leaving, is it the one by the site?
Right there.
Yeah, one-way sign, so it's only one way north onto 125. They don't want anybody going south.
When you're pulling out.
Yeah, when you're pulling out. Yep, just simply a state-required sign.
Don't go south.
Yeah, but the sign is facing the other direction. It's not implying it to people exiting from the parking. The sign is facing towards the roadway. So I'm assuming it's directing the people who are coming in to turn left?
No, it just may be a drafting error. It's probably supposed to be facing the other way. I could have the draftsman correct that.
Okay. So it's intended for the people leaving?
People on 125, yes. Yeah, leaving and onto 125.
You just have to turn it around. Okay, so how do they see that if it's facing the other way? That's what I'm getting at.
I'm sorry, maybe there's some confusion. For the people leaving the site going onto 125?
Right.
That they're not to...
Right. But that's what I'm saying, if you're leaving, that sign is, you know, it's facing the wrong way, in a sense.
I think he's saying he would fix it, they would turn it around.
Yeah, we'll just, yeah, we'll turn the sign to make sure it's facing the right way.
Okay.
So it makes sense, you're right, though, it should be clarified.
Any other questions from the Board?
I just think, if I could suggest something, it should say "right turn only," not "one way."
Well, it should say what the state says.
It should say "right turn only."
Is that what the state says?
The state doesn't dictate necessarily what the sign on the private property says.
I thought Charlie said it was dictated by the state, no?
I think it is, yes.
It's dictated that they say "one way"?
It's a state sign, that's not our sign.
Right.
The state put that there.
Okay.
They just don't want anybody going south in the northbound lane, that's all.
I think Jeff's saying, maybe you should look into it and, you know, do the right thing.
The fact that it's a state sign, that's why it's so confusing.
True.
There you go. It has no common sense. If it was their sign, they'd have done it the right way the first time. Because honestly, if there were a sign on the island to the left of where the traffic can cross over? Because that "one way" is confusing.
Yeah, I hear you.
Those crossing over.
I think we hear you, but I think it, this is the way it is now. It's not really the change of use that we're talking about, but it's a valid point, and they should look into it. And they say they will, so that's good. But it doesn't really affect the change of use because it's an existing issue, I don't think.
I understand that, but why not clarify it? So they don't have to victims of somebody having a traffic accident in front of their business? I mean...
Okay. I think they heard you.
Get the state to do what it's supposed to do. They'll look into it. Any other questions, Francine?
I just have, just a couple of quick questions. Can you tell us approximately the size of the compressors that you would be servicing? I mean, are they large ones, are they as big as a desk, or small, or various sizes?
Actually, you get a gentleman.
If you could come to the microphone, that would be good. And Charlie should probably move. Just identify yourself, sir, and where you live.
Chris Poliquin, live in Hampstead, New Hampshire. Chris Poliquin.
Could you spell that for her? She's not from town, everybody knows that Poliquin's in town.
I grew up in town, I've lived there 20 or 40-something years. The size of the compressors that we service, anywhere from homeowner stuff, right up through, we do a lot of big power plant work, up to 300 and 500 horsepower. That stuff won't be coming onsite, that's all stuff that's stationary, and we do mobile service out on that stuff. Typically, it's like your gas station-style compressors, like a five-horse, you know, like the town equipment has at the fire station, the highway garage. We do a lot of that stuff. We do a few diesel portable units, but 90, probably 98% of our work is off-site.
And would you be necessarily using any kind of fluids to repair or service these compressors? I guess the reason I ask that is because, you know, if you have hydraulic fluid or tranny fluid or whatever, I would like to know if there's any process that we need to put in place to make sure we contain them and dispose of them properly.
There is some oil in the compressors. We do have a containment system that we put down when we're doing an oil change. And then our oil gets hauled off-site by Safety Clean or people who burn it in a waste oil burner. But the amount of waste oil that we generate at the shop is maybe five gallons a month, five, 10 gallons a month, tops. It's not, a lot of the places require us to leave it onsite so that they can account for it.
All right, okay. And now, I guess a question to the Board or to Mr. Cashel, is that something that needs to be put on the site plan about any kind of specific disposal of it or anything?
I prefer to Mr. Cashman or Mr. Moore on that question.
Is that something we need to do, or is it good enough if it's five gallons?
Well, I mean, we could have asked them to add a note saying disposal of oil is in accordance with standard procedures or something like that.
We have to anyways, we have to document it.
But it doesn't hurt to put it on the site plan, so...
Nope, nope, that's fine, we do...
If it's just a notation...
You don't have any problems, just put some wording on it.
Yeah, I have no problems, we do store some...
It's just one of those things.
Yep, we do store some new oil onsite for outgoing service, but that's on a containment pallet that, you know...
You're doing it already.
In case it leaks, it's on a containment system, ready to go.
What's the exact wording on that?
In accordance with state disposal regulations.
I'm sure there's some state regulation that I, you know...
Yeah, Charlie, if you could just come up with something, when I go to sign that thing, I'll just take a look at it, and you can...
Yeah, I just want to make sure our MS4 stormwater compliance is intact because we, I believe we have to report on that very shortly.
Right. Does the Board want to see that writing, or can I look at it when I sign it?
No, I mean, I personally don't need to, I just want it noted in the site plan.
I'll take a look at it before I sign.
All right, sorry to bug you guys, but...
They can put that down as a condition when we move.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions for Mr. Poliquin? Okay. Any other questions from the Board? I don't have any questions, which is new for me. I just thought I would announce that. Okay. Any, oh, I should say, any questions from the public? Do we have anybody online? Nobody online? Okay, anybody in the audience there? I don't see anyone, so no other questions? They're being done, and I will close the hearing, and we'll go into deliberation on the matter. So thank you, Charlie. I don't think we'll have any questions, but we're just gonna deliberate. You can sit there if you want.
Okay.
We may have a question. So now we're in deliberation on this change of use. And if you look at our staff report, there's a motion there. Unless there's some discussion that anybody has, we can go right to the motion. Okay? If anybody wants to make a motion, Tim?
Yep, I'll move that the amended site plan for 157 Plastow Road, Tax Map 30, Lot 67, which adds a compressor sales, service, and warehouse business use, and discontinues the motor vehicle sales and associated display designated parking, be conditionally approved on the condition that a note is added to the plan that waste oil will be disposed of in the proper fashion.
Okay, very good. Did you get that, Charlene?
I hope so.
Okay. Why don't you read it back, and Tim can say whether he got it? If you're ready, if you finished.
Okay, so you added to the end of that that it would be conditionally approved, on condition that a note be added to the plan for the oil?
Oh, yeah, proper disposal of the waste oil.
A note be added for the proper disposal of waste oil? That sounds good to me. Are you okay with that, Francine?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Second on the motion?
I'll second it, or, go ahead, no, Karen can do it.
All right, you can second it, hold on, Francine. We're having a battle here in the seconds here. Okay, so we have a second, any further discussion? They're being done, I call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 500.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sorry to rush through it, but there was not much there, so appreciate it, and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Nothing wrong with a quick hearing. I don't think it'll be a trend.
Doesn't get much easier than that.
Okay, let's look back on the agenda. We only have one other item here, unless somebody comes up with something. And this one may be fairly quick, too. I did pass out the amended rules. They weren't in your package, but I think everybody now has it. The amended rules, and the amendments are in red. Now, if you don't happen to have that, the minutes carry the same, and it's a little confusing because there are two of them. Now, we went through this last time, and we agreed that these would be the changes, and we said we would read them at this meeting, because our rules say to read them, that's one of our rules, and then next meeting, we'll read them, and then we'll vote on them, next meeting. So unless anybody has any objections, that's what we'll do, we'll read them.
Are you only gonna read the changes?
I'm only gonna read the changes. Okay, you got a question?
Yes, there was one I could not find back in the report. When a person is not able to be here for information or a vote, then who picks the alternate to...
It's not in the packet?
Perform the search.
Do you want to wait till we get to that section, or if you could hold that?
Oh, yeah, fine, I just don't know if we covered that.
Which section is it, just so I can make a note?
I couldn't remember what's in that.
I thought we had discussed that, too.
Yeah, I can't remember.
It's possible we missed something, yeah.
Jeff needs a copy of what you hear.
I don't have a copy. Do you need a copy?
I do.
I don't have any more copies now, unfortunately.
Yeah, I'll give him mine. I can give him mine.
You can get it from there.
You get an extra?
They're just up.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so do you remember what section that was? Say what it is again, I didn't quite catch what you said.
When you have to appoint an alternate.
It's down on Section 225-5, Page 6. F, appointment of alternates, is that where it is?
I didn't know it had a title.
225.
Page 6, up two paragraphs. Oh, you don't have it now? Did you give it away? Why do you have it?
No, I've got mine.
Okay.
On page 6.
Not the one I have.
Right here. Page 6.
I would say, let's wait till we get to that section, otherwise we're gonna get ourselves...
We know where it is, let's wait till we get there, and we'll bang through the ones that we agree upon. We'll make a note, Karen. Karen, if it's all right? We'll cover it when we get there. Okay, so, changes are in red. We would also, at the top, put that we amended it as of whatever date, you know, that we do amend it. So the first one is middle of the page there, as offered by the Office of Strategic Initiatives, OSI, and other state agencies. We're talking about training. Does anybody have any objection to that?
No.
Where are you at? I'm on the first page, Jeff. In the middle, under Training?
Okay.
So I just read that one, and I think we're good with that. So let's go to Page 2. On Page 2, there's a, Section F, F2. Only one board member or alternate may serve. We just put the adjective in there on another land use board, so it's just an adjective. Meeting attendance, we changed that. Board members, ex officio members, and alternates are expected to attend all meetings. However, in the event they are unable to attend a meeting, the Planning Board Chair should be contacted. And we just changed it from the, a member of the Board Administrative Staff to the Planning Board Chair.
How do you know what, how to get ahold of you?
For me?
I said, how do I know how to get ahold of you as opposed to calling Dee?
I thought you had my email, you had my email, right?
As opposed to calling...
I'll give you my phone, too.
As opposed to calling Dee and telling her somebody they won't be here.
That's what we would do. Do you have an objection to that? Because I thought we agreed on that.
We all agreed on that.
That's what, I'm confused. I can do that, or I can't do that?
No, if this is changed, you would call the Planning Board Chair. If this is changed, you would call the Planning Board Chair, because it clearly says "call the Planning Board Chair."
So you can't call Dee and tell her you won't be...
No, it's changed to the Planning Board Chair.
Okay. What's that number gonna be?
I'll give you the number. I don't want to give it out to the world, but I'll give it to you after the meeting. Is that all right?
Well, I guess that's my point. Is that a personal number, then? Or is it a number specifically for that purpose of calling in? Because D is a member of the planning administration, and so if I, if you call in to advise that you're gonna miss a meeting, and she just lets everybody know, as opposed to trying to call you specifically?
As the chair, I need to know that you're not gonna be here, because I'm the one who's gonna be at the meeting, and I'm the one who's gonna say you're excused or not excused.
That's what I just said.
Right. So you would call me, Jeff?
Call D, she advises you, who will be absent.
But my preference and what I recommended and what I thought everybody agreed, at least the consensus was of the board, was that you'd call me.
Yeah, but I think that's, it could be a little bit more difficult for people to contact you than it is to call D. She's the administrative assistant for the planning board, that's her job.
Why is it difficult?
It's more difficult to do you, because there's only one way to get ahold of you, and you may or may not be answering her phone. She's here to work for the planning board.
Well, I have phone mail, Jeff.
She wears many hats now.
I understand that, and she's very capable at it.
She doesn't just wear a planning board hat.
I will, I will promise you, Jeff, that I always get my, my phone calls, and I, I won't miss it.
Mr. Chair, is it appropriate, or are you comfortable with having people email you if they can't attend?
Yes, they'll email.
So you, we have two options to do that? Okay.
Yeah, you can email me, Jeff, if you prefer. I have, I carry my phone with me all the time. I don't think it's gonna be a problem. I do it for the, I do it for the library. I've never had a problem. You okay?
I don't think it, I think it should be through D, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
I've been doing this for a few years.
I'm not objecting, you're welcome to your opinion. I mean, if the consensus is to leave it, then we'll just leave it.
That's fine.
All right, let's move on. Page 3. We changed B to, from administrative to planning staff, and then we struck the list, i.e. planning coordinator, administrative assistant or assistance, recording secretary. We just struck that out, and then at the end we added, all duties described will be covered by available personnel, which was, before it was in number 2, I believe. And then in the second paragraph, we said, all personnel deemed necessary by the board shall be either contractors or town employees, because we now have a contractor for a recording secretary, and as such, and we scratched as such, and who are part of the town's personnel plan, et cetera, in accordance with RSA 376, I think Francine, you suggested that.
Yep.
And we struck paragraph 3.
You could strike out the word "and" after employees. In other words, it should read "shall be either contractors or town employees who are part of the town's personnel. Follow?
Scratch, scratch the word "and"?
As well, yeah.
Correct. Just extend the line, one, one word to the left.
Yeah.
All right, we'll scratch that. Okay, any other changes there? All right, it being done, we'll turn to the next page. Duties, chair of the board, we added three, three additional duties, shall set the agendas, shall review and approve the annual planning board budget, and shall speak for the board. Any comments there?
Yeah, I have a couple. I think for easier reading, they should be enumerated, like under planning staff, we were 1, 2, 3, 4. Should have 1, 2, 3, 4 here, over.
Where are you now? What page are you on?
On, on duties. Instead of listing them in the whole sentence, I think it reads easier if they are enumerated. So number 1 duty would be, set the agendas. Number 2 would be, review and approve. Number 3 would, you know, blah, 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 blah. But I guess it'd be a long list, it's hard to read, harder to read, I think.
Let me just list them. One agenda, two. So you want them, like, forwarded?
Well, like, paragraph D, under planning staff, they're all.
Yeah, that, that makes sense for continuity and consistency.
Yeah, enumerate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So does everybody clearly understand that?
But it's the same language, right?
Oh, yes.
Well, I've.
Unless you want to change it.
Some.
Did you get that, Charlie? Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, shall set the agendas, I think we should, should add with the input from the planning staff, and that makes it consistent with planning staff duties that said shall prepare the agendas, shall work with the chair to prepare the agendas, so.
So you're adding, shall set the agendas what after that, with the planning staff?
Yeah, shall set the agendas with input from the planning staff.
Okay. Okay, I have no objection to that.
And then, the next one, shall review, review and approve the annual planning board budget. I, I don't know, I mean, we probably haven't been as consistent, but I think the, the planning board really should have at least a chance to review and comment on the budget.
The planning board as a, as a?
As a whole. Yeah.
The whole should approve the planning board budget.
That, that wouldn't change the, shall review and approve, maybe we add to it, shall review and approve annual planning board budget after consultation with the board?
That would be fine.
After consultation with the board, with a full board. Okay?
And then, shall speak for the board, I would add, in accordance with paragraph D8, which talks about correspondence and how the, what the chair does in terms of written correspondence, but this would be oral correspondence, we'll just add that.
So you're adding, in accordance with paragraph D8?
Yes.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Okay, so, instead of just saying, shall speak for the board, say, shall speak for the board in accordance with paragraph D.
Parenthesis 8. That's on the next page. Okay.
D8.
D, capital D, parentheses 8.
8, right, okay, I got it.
Okay?
Yeah.
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
All right, and we move on to the next one. Planning staff, number 2, D2, ensure draft and approved minutes, so we just added draft or posted, and we are doing that now, so it's working. D4, at the end, we added at least the Friday before each meeting, unless extenuating circumstances as determined by the, by the chair. So remember, we had that discussion that we would at least, and John, you weren't here, that we would have everything at least the Friday before each meeting. I know you and I've had that conversation, and that's your goal, so we're just baking it into the roles here. And then I would have the determination, or you would say to me, well, there's some extenuating circumstances, I would have the ability to say, well, in that case, we'll accept it.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, D5, notify the chair of each application received and notify the entire board of all correspondence and emails directed to the board within a reasonable timeframe. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Number 6, we added, receive and timestamp all applications. You know, you weren't here again, John, last time, but I think you and I had that conversation, that it made, it was a best practice to timestamp the, the applications.
Yeah, I mean, everything that comes in.
Yeah.
Should be dated and time stamped.
But that particular seemed like, you know, the clock starts from the application, it's a very critical date, so when we receive those applications in our package, they should be time stamped.
Isn't it already done that way?
No, not the ones we receive, they aren't time stamped.
I, I think D keeps a pretty meticulous log of when she gets stuff, but she doesn't always timestamp the actual application.
Yeah.
And so that's what we're, that's the part that we're adding.
I understand.
Timestamp the application.
The actual application, just add that to the process. So it's not as though she's not tracking, it's just not on, it should be on, on.
Why do we need to see it?
Time stamp. She has a time stamp, I assume, so. Okay?
Jeff, Mr. Chairman, it really becomes just a matter of practice. It's something new, but for efficiency and pretty much everything the planning board does has a deadline involved with it, and that first deadline actually comes with the submission, so you date stamp that submission, that's an official record of the time, it's not a guesswork. Then everybody will have copies of that.
Right.
In their packets. You'll know when the application actually came in, the, the date stamp of the plans. It's a little bit of work, but you, you do get used to it.
It sounds like she has a log already, so date stamping is just one additional step.
Yeah.
Okay. So we go to the next page, 8D, we added, no correspondence shall be sent until reviewed and approved by the chair. Any comments on that one? Okay. Remember, we're gonna read these again, so you're gonna have another swipe at it. Okay, we go to page 6. We add a little verbiage on, the first meeting will be a workshop meeting, the second meeting will be for hearings, unless circumstances arise to necessitate hearings at the first meeting. That does happen once in a while, so we have to keep it a little bit open there, but our preference is the first meeting is, is a workshop. And Loria suggested, no hearings were gone after 9:00 p.m., although hearings may be opened and then continued for the next meeting. So in other words, we could vote to, to accept the application, we could actually open the hearing, and then we could continue the hearing, that could happen. But what we're trying to do is not exhaust us all ourselves, you know, and be here till 11 o'clock or whatever. 9 o'clock was what Loria suggested, I think everybody agreed with that.
Well, well, it should say, I think, a new, open a new hearing. Know what I mean?
Say, what, what change are you making?
Instead of no, no hearings. Right?
No hearing.
Didn't we talk about something?
Yeah, you're right, you're right, that's more specific.
Say, say it again, I can catch it.
Open a new.
New hearing, no new hearings.
New hearings, no new hearings?
Right.
Right.
No new, or just new?
But I thought we were also gonna make, like, some kind of judgment call about it, too.
Well, that's what the judgment call is.
So we don't, we don't?
No, the judgment call is that, well, maybe we didn't, didn't put, add it there, I said above, unless circumstances arise. I suppose you could add to that second sentence, unless circumstances arise, so make it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
What are the circumstances, though?
Well, I don't know, what if we think it's like a quick hearing and we don't, we're not gonna make, make them come back, we'll just do it that, like, say if we think it's gonna take till 9:30 or, you know?
I suppose, that's all we would add.
I think we should leave the window open somewhat.
All right, so let me suggest, unless it's determined that the hearing.
I thought we discussed that.
Yeah, and that, that should be at the discretion.
I may have missed it, right, I may have missed it.
I'm sorry, that, that should be at the discretion of the chair, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe unless it's determined at discretion, by discretion of the chair to, to continue.
Okay.
To, not to continue, but to.
Open new business after 9?
Yeah, open the.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The thing that we need, the thing we need to be careful about is that we have 25 days.
No, but, but if you accept that, usually we're getting them and you have that acceptance piece, so we're gonna accept them for 21 days. It's, we still have 65 days to act upon them.
Right. But, I mean, you gotta be careful, I mean, if we're gonna add even no new hearings, or however we want to word that, we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot and say, oh, hey, our rules of procedure don't allow us to vote on the completeness of applications GF and H, if it's, you know, a long agenda. So, I don't know how you, how we need to word that in, but.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
We, from the time that somebody, an applicant submits the application, we have 25 days to take some action. The action could be as simple as accepting the plan as complete, which is a separate action from the public hearing. And so, normally, we, if there's two, three hearings in a row, say, we accept the application as complete, then we move on to the public hearing, then we go to the next applicant, accept as complete, have the public hearing. If it's a long agenda and we go past 9 o'clock, we need verbiage in there somehow that say we will. Do the accepting as complete.
Not to interrupt, but what we would do, in my mind, anyway, we would, say we had two more, we would vote that they were complete, and then we could just stop there and not open the hearing, or we could vote one as complete, open the hearing and, and continue it, or we could open the hearing and continue both of them. So you have multiple options there, and I think this covers it. So I think you're, you're still good. What may happen, though, is the next workshop meeting, now you're gonna have to have a hearing.
Yeah.
Which goes back to the other point, but that's fine, too.
Yeah.
That's why we have two meetings.
And, and the other, the other thing is, you would have to open the public hearing and continue with the date certain. Otherwise, you've got to cough up, you've got to do another legal notice.
Say it again, I'm not quite, I didn't quite catch it.
If you, if you have the legal notice saying the public hearing's gonna be held on Monday, June 1st.
Yeah.
And then, it gets to be 9 o'clock and you don't want to have any more hearings, which is understandable, but if you don't, you, you need to at least open the public hearing and say we're gonna continue it to.
Right.
Whenever.
That's an option, you could open it and continue it.
Well, it's no option, if you don't.
Usually, the wording is to look at the completeness, and if it's, the way we currently do it, the way D words these, to look at the completeness, and if it's complete, you could open the public hearing.
That's right. But I'm saying, if we're beyond the 9 o'clock deadline and we're not gonna have any more public hearings.
Right.
If you don't open it and continue it, then you have to re-advertise it.
Oh, you would have to re-advertise it, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
If you didn't open it. So more than likely, the best thing to do is you have two more, both of them complete, open them and continue them, and then you don't have to re-advertise, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So what, you're suggesting we do that every time? We don't, if we have, whatever hearings we have last, left, we open them, we open the, we, we voted to complete, we open them, and we continue them, just consistently like that. And then we wouldn't have to re-advertise.
Yeah.
Is that, but is that a good practice? I'm just thinking through. I guess it is. I mean, I always thought it was a little weird that you didn't have to re-advertise on a continued hearing, because if people didn't hear about the first hearing, then they're never gonna hear about the second one. So it, it seemed to me that you should re-advertise a continued hearing, but you're saying we don't, we don't, under the law, have to public, put a public notice out.
Right.
Francine?
Just a clarification question, when we continue the hearing, should we specify continue to June 15th?
Oh, absolutely.
You have to, yeah.
So that would preclude us having to re-advertise, I believe, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, okay, I got it.
So is anybody agree that what we should say, then, is any hearings that are not, is there, we haven't got to, those hearings should be voted complete, opened, and then continued to a specific date?
Yes.
Is there a timeframe from date of acceptance as complete to the time you must have a public hearing?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just specify one thing? So in the public hearing notice, you know, the first part of it does cite that the board will consider the application completeness. If found complete, and this is what the public hearing notices already do say, if found complete, the board finds the application complete, you will proceed immediately to the public hearing. Those two statements have to be included in the public hearing notice in order for you to actually conduct the public hearing.
Right.
Okay.
The wording is actually, the planning board may immediately, may immediately, doesn't don't have to, they may.
Now, on this subject, rather than moving on to a different subject, I want to begin to bring to the board's attention RSA 676, colon, 4, and it's subsection B, it's a long paragraph in subsection C. Just real quickly, I want to just bring this up because we're talking about it with this particular section. Subsection B, it reads, the applicant shall file the application with the board or its agent at least 21 days prior to the meeting at which the application will be accepted. All that says is, the applicant has to submit the application at least 21 days to be considered, right? Now, subsection C, the following subsection reads, the board shall, at the next regular meeting, or within 30 days following the delivery of the application for which notice can be given in accordance with the requirements of the sub-paragraph, determine if the submitted application is complete according to the board's regulations. Okay? So, in order for somebody to actually be accepted, their application to be accepted, for any meeting of the board, for application acceptance, it has to be submitted at least 21 days before that particular meeting, right? That's all it says. But it's 30 days or the next regular meeting for which the application can be properly advertised. So there isn't a 21-day limit from the date of submission for this board to hold a hearing. What the statute's actually saying is that when somebody submits an application, it's up to this board to decide what is the appropriate meeting date for which we can hold the public hearing and vote to accept that application. So, I mean, this is, this is real intricate stuff. When I started reading it, I'm like, wow, that is so different than what everybody seems to be interpreting, you know, the requirement to be. And when I read through this whole thing in its entirety, is that this planning board doesn't have to have a meeting. doesn't have to have a meeting of that application on, within 21 days of submission, or even within 30 days. It's whatever, whatever meeting date is most appropriate so that we can properly advertise the meeting for acceptance as well as the hearing. And that could be 45 days out, or whatever the timeframe is. But it's not 21 days and it's not 30 days. It's within our meeting calendar, whenever we're set to meet and whenever that application is ready for application acceptance and for that public hearing, preferably.
So.
I agree.
So, well, yeah, I, I misspoke when I said 25 days. It's 30 days, as John.
Yeah, but still, it's not 30 days. It could be 31, 32, it could be 45.
Well, you've got to be, I mean, we, except for holiday, when holidays come in, and it's very few Wednesday holidays, 4th of July, I think, is maybe the only one, or Christmas. We meet every other week, essentially, you know, every, twice a month.
Yeah.
So if we had, I suppose if we got bombarded with five or six applications, we could schedule the acceptance as complete within 30 days because we have to take some action within 30 days. And you could schedule the public hearing for another date. They don't necessarily have to fall on the same date.
Right.
I mean, they normally do because we can fit it all in, but.
You know.
But I don't think you could, I think we'd be in a little bit of trouble if we kind of arbitrarily move things out and claim that, well, the first Wednesday is a workshop, so that's not a hearing date. I think you'd get a little bit of trouble with that. So you just have to be careful.
You know, these materials I, I submitted for this, this meeting tonight, not that we'll get into that volume of stuff, but this is real good education, training for the board to understand all of these publications here and the state statutes. Because ultimately, we, we don't need to stress ourselves out as a board having, say, we have five public hearings scheduled. Well, we should never put ourselves against the wall that we have to get through all of them. And this is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
You know, that we're here till midnight, or here till 11:30, or whatever.
Yeah, boy.
We want to best manage our time so that, you know, we conduct our business as efficiently, as effectively as possible. But we're not putting ourselves into a position where our next day, we all have lives to lead, but our next day is completely ruined.
Yeah.
We want to be as sharp as possible when we review these, too. When we get to 10:30, 11 o'clock, I, I have to admit, I'm not as sharp as I was earlier, so. And I, I did see, when I looked at a lot of the other rules of a lot of other towns and cities in New Hampshire, they did have a timeframe, they did have nine, 9:30. The question at hand here is that last sentence. How do we factor in what we just discussed in that last sentence? I mean, everything but that last sentence.
So what does that last sentence read now?
Let me make a suggestion on that. "No hearings will be heard after 9:00 PM, although hearings may be opened and then continued to the next meeting."
To the next available. Not the next meeting, the next available.
All right, next available.
Next regular.
Next public hearing meeting.
And, and the reason for that is because the staff report in, in working with the chair may cite a number of items that need to be worked on that couldn't possibly be accomplished, and most of the time it isn't, within that two-week timeframe. But within a month's timeframe, that work would be more, more regularly be accomplished.
Okay, so Jeff suggested a sentence. Read it again. "No hearings will be," what did I say? "No hearings will be heard after 9:00 PM."
On new hearings.
Although hearings may be opened and then continued to.
A date specific, to a date specific.
Or however you want to phrase that.
So you're getting rid of the suggestion of putting new, no new hearings.
I can't hear both of yous. Hold, hold on. Let's just make sure everybody understands what the sentence is. And I'm going to read it back to you. "No hearings will be heard after 9:00 PM, although hearings may be opened," then what? It's too bad we can't put it on the boards, we all see it.
Although, although new hearings.
Although hearings may be opened and then continued to a future date. Everybody get that?
Yeah.
Unless you want to specify the next meeting.
You have to.
You have to.
Okay. If that's the case, then specify it for the next public hearing date, which would be the second meeting of the month. Okay, is that all in the sentence, what you just said, or is that just elaborating on the sentence?
You, you have to, you, you will continue it date specific.
Right.
It doesn't mean it's the next meeting. It could be meetings.
So you specify that it's continued to the next public hearing date. It determines it's continued, that I continue it, I would have to specify a date.
Yeah. Right.
So. Let me take a crack and rewrite this.
Thank you, Tim. This is your bailiwick.
I try to send it out to everyone, so, you know, plenty of chance to review it for the next, for the next reading.
Oh, you're going to take a crack for the next meeting?
I'm sorry?
Did you, you're going to read a, you're going to come up with a sentence today? Because we have to read it twice, and this is the first reading, so we should try to get it tonight, I hate to say.
I don't, I mean, you have to have two readings. I don't think it anywhere says you can't make changes during those readings.
Oh, you can, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that, then we can come up with something, we don't have to, like, kill ourselves trying to figure it out. So we have it in front of us so we can all see it and understand what the hell we're looking at.
Yeah.
The wording is important. The idea is that we want, we don't want to be continuing these things until, you know, midnight. And I think there's a good suggestion by Laurie. And if we, if you want to come up with something, Tim, and send it to me, we can, we can add it in.
Nine.
Yeah.
Okay? That was easy. Let's go to page seven. Okay, the only thing we added there is that since we're in the, you know, the COVID environment, we added this, and I think it's probably a good thing to do, anyway. "If the chair, except if the, all electronic, personal electronic devices will place in silent mode, except if the chair or planning director need to receive email or calls from the butters or during, or the public during hearings." No. Okay? No.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff. You don't like that? You shouldn't be able to receive communications for, for a hearing via email just to the chair. But we, before, if you read, if you heard my COVID announcement up front, we said, "If you have any issues with the remote, you contact John Cashwell's email. If you have any issues, you know, if you have any questions, you can email me." So that's why we added this.
We have to have something because of the remote meetings.
Yeah, we want to make sure that the public has access, and that's all we're doing. We're not opening up where everybody's device is open. It's just my device sits here on, you know, and I know when it comes, it goes off. It's not going to disrupt the meeting. It's just that if somebody emails me, I'll have a, they'll have a way to get questions here. I think it's important to do that.
They're not doing, nobody's doing that tonight.
No, this, no. Nine times out of 10, you're not going to get any.
Right.
So if, if you're okay with that, Jeff will keep going. I, I'm sure, if, that's allowed to receive emails and phone calls as part of a public hearing?
It is under the COVID mandate from the governor, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I, we all, all of our boards and committees that are televised have to do that.
Yeah. Well, okay, COVID's not going to be around forever, and these rules will. So will these rules be changed or reversed?
We, we can change them whenever we want.
Change the rules at any time if you feel strongly about it. I don't think it's going to cause any, any problems. Yes, Mr. Cashwell?
You know, they, they are talking about post-COVID conditions and that in some states, they're talking about these virtual meetings will actually be illegal. That we're going to be going back to, to traditional means of conducting meetings only, so.
That's a stupid backward idea.
I know, it's a, but that's, that's what they're talking about.
I hope New Hampshire doesn't follow that guideline.
Good point. Okay, are we okay with that?
Yes.
All right, we'll go to the next page. And the only thing we added at the, at A2, at the top of the next page, page eight, "The chair may change the order of the public hearings at his discretion." I think that's done already. I just, we just added it there. I mean, the board may vote at a regular meeting to change the order, the complete, the order of the agenda. This is just changing the order of the public hearings. Now, if I see a public hearing that's going to take two minutes, I'm putting it up front. The reason that we put them in that order is because that's how they come in. But oftentimes, one won't take much. You don't want to have the longest one and have people sit here. So I think that's, that's warranted. We've done that many times, anyway. Pardon? We've already done that many times. Right, we're just baking it in. Huh? We're just baking it in. Okay, that's it. Well, I think the chair has the discretion, anyway, as chair, to decide which order the meetings, the hearings are done. Now, I have the official. Well, it's under RSA. Okay, so that's the first reading. Unless there's any other changes, anybody wants to raise?
Yeah, we should get back to Laurie.
Oh, yeah, we've got to go back to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Karen. Where was that again? Page six.
Oh, on page six.
Appointment of alternates. So the floor is yours if you want to make a change there?
No, I just wanted to know, I don't think, I need a change, no?
No, she doesn't need a change. We didn't, she didn't know it was in there.
Oh, it's in there?
I thought it was missing.
Oh, even better.
Yeah.
You're good with that?
So it's already there.
Beautiful.
I, I did ask another question, though, was what do we do?
Speaking to the microphone there.
What do we do about positions? I had asked, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was going to discuss it under old business if you, if you're, if the chair is okay to do that, but, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are, are we finished with all of this?
Oh, okay, so that, no more rule changes? We're good?
We're good, okay.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, what is the other?
So under old business, I do have an email into our HR Director, Lori Sadowitz, to request those two job descriptions. But I just wanted to let the board know, they are hideously busy. They just yesterday completed a huge document for reimbursements for Gopher to try to reimburse some of the expenditures that we've had throughout the year. And both Greg and Lori are involved in our budgetary season for 2021. And he just sent out our expenditures to date for August. So please be patient, and as soon as I get it, if the chair is comfortable, as soon as she gives me the information, I will forward it to you and then you can disseminate it out to the board. But they're really, really busy right now, and, and I apologize that I didn't get it to you. But hopefully you'll be understanding about that, and they will respond within the next week or so.
Is that okay?
All right.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody have, I don't have any more items. Anybody else have anything? John, do you, you know, I just, I don't know whether you know, I haven't heard about any, any applications coming in or anything new.
I do have a meeting with Dee on Friday in regard to a proposed submission, but that won't be for the next meeting.
Okay.
So they're just trying to get the application organized. Other than that, it might be a minor, something here and there come in, but, you know, those, those lot line relocations can come in at any time. You know, there's not much planning that goes involved, gets involved with those. Other than that, our next meeting would be a workshop.
Be October 7th.
Yeah.
So we, I don't have any topics right now, but I'm, I'm sure, if, does anybody have any suggested topics? Not that we're looking for work to do, but is there anything that, yes, Francine?
How are we doing on our master plan? Is there any, I, I think we stopped right before implementation and designating certain individuals to take responsibilities for certain portions of the master plan. Would that be something that we should move forward? Because it seems like every time we update the master plan, we just put it away for another five or 10 years, and we don't really do anything with it.
Yeah, we had talked about assigning responsibilities and timeline.
Yeah, would that be something that the board be?
I can't remember, did he actually have that? I don't think he had a timeline.
Yes, we do.
We do have a timeline.
And, yeah, again, I'll bring that in. A, a list of things that we, they were either ongoing or were, or that we, in the master plan, said we were going to work on in 2020. Now, maybe I'll do it for 21 as well.
For 2020?
2020 is pretty much shot.
Don't even go on, yeah, I know.
Okay, so does that mean we don't need to have that on the agenda? I don't think we do.
It's up to you.
Go ahead, Karen.
The other question was, we were going to discuss, I think, at one point, plans, which could be part of the master plan on the property, you know, going from like where Sanborns was up to the timeline.
Well, we, we had a corridor study, which was not just there, but all of 125.
Okay.
And we didn't, we haven't moved forward on that. That wouldn't be a bad thing to discuss, but I don't know whether we have, what do we have to discuss, John?
Well, if we had some ideas, are we allowed to, you know, some forward on what we could do with that stretch?
Right, but we, we did have some discussion about having a corridor study, and where do we leave that?
Yeah. Jim, one thing I've been thinking about seriously with this corridor study for 125, the district itself is pretty well-defined. I don't think when we talk about, say, updating the corridor study for Route 125, that we want to jockey around any of the district lines that presently exist. And I'd like to defer to one, Tim, in that regard, Tim. And what, what I'm saying, does that follow with your mindset? When, and what I'm saying is that district is really well-defined in its boundaries. We don't want to go into other abutting boundaries, zoning districts.
Yeah, I don't.
Rather stay within the present corridor boundaries.
Yeah.
Correct?
That would be my take on it, yeah.
Yeah, and when I look at the maps in that regard, you know, the, the definition of that corridor is, is set relative to the borders. And it's usual, it's pretty much those properties that front along 125 to the rear of their property lines. And it doesn't go beyond those fronting lots. So you have a defined zoning district. What really needs to be done in order to create an overlay district of that, in effect, all of the existing uses that are allowed and the permits that are required for any proposed uses when the, within the district would still remain in place. But the overlay district would allow for various type of uses. And this would be presented to the planning board. And those would be mixed uses that would be allowed within the overlay district, which would actually be the present zoning district that runs along Route 125.
Can you give an example of an overlay district?
So an overlay district, again, all of the existing uses are allowed to be permitted for, if that's what the board would like to do, or the town would like to do. Because ultimately, this has to be voted on by the town at the annual town meeting. So an overlay district would allow for mixed uses. Mixed uses usually, in today's terminology, means multifamily residential development that would be allowed within a commercial district. Not that this town would want to entertain, say, residents above commercial buildings, you know, first-floor commercial buildings, and allow for a second or third story of residential development above those first floors. But that's what is happening out there relative to introducing mixed uses throughout the, throughout the country, in these commercial districts especially. Because these brick-and-mortar storefronts, as everybody calls them, pretty much, a lot of them are, are becoming more and more empty. And trying to find tenants for these storefronts, you know, you really have to mix things up and, you know, match them up with what's going on in the economy. So, you know, you do have more insurance companies, you have more law firms. You have, you know, what we just entertained, the last meeting or the meeting before was another pet store, pet grooming. the last meeting or the meeting before was another pet store, pet grooming, pet training, daycare facilities, you know, just a multitude of uses that are emerging that need storefronts, but also within those commercial districts, more and more residential development is being created, but also park locations, recreational outlets, you know, really mixing things up. You know, if you go to the end of Route 3 in Burlington, for instance, in the Burlington Mall, it's, it's, the Burlington Mall is being transformed with millions and millions of dollars, and, you know, residences are being introduced to that environment, hotels, you name it, it's all coming together, filling up what would be empty stores, because more and more, people don't want to go shopping at malls. They don't need to. They're ordering online. You know, even Amazon is going into where the Burlington Mall is, as, you know, pickup and delivery. You know, if you just can't wait for that, that little helicopter to show up to drop off a package, you know, you just need it now. You drive over to the, the Amazon facility. So that's what I'm talking about, is introducing more uses, creating a destination location for a multitude of uses, including recreational.
Is this something that we could discuss at the workshop meeting next time? You could maybe bring in some suggestions, and I know Karen has some specific ideas for part of 125.
Yeah.
The other thing I would mention is that, at some point, I, I think that's probably October, November, we're going to start talking about zoning, possible new zoning, proposed zoning ordinances?
It's never too early to start talking about zoning.
So how do those, I don't really understand, and maybe you can explain, how do the zoning ordinances, the proposed new ones, I mean, you and Dee would come in and say, these are the proposed ones. Do we, do we have a running list already, or?
I don't, I don't know. Dee typically kept one. But this year, with the, with the virus thing, I, you know, I'm not, I don't know if there's anything on that list or not.
Yeah. Well, maybe you can ask Dee, we did some, we need to start thinking about that. I know you have a suggestion. So I'm just raising the whole zoning ordinance in September, so we don't let it, you know, forget, we need to do it. Jeff?
I just want to make a clarification on an overlay district. What it is, is allowing a use that is not typically allowed in that district to be done in a certain location within that district that it is, quote, "appropriate" to. So that's how you do an overlay. You're actually allowing.
Additional uses.
An expansion potentially of a district that is growing, and you would like to see that continue, but it would need to go into a place that it's not allowed.
Right.
So it's one of those things you have to look at with a long-term impact, as to, will it be okay? Or will it completely change and ruin the district that it's being extended into or overlaid on, into?
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, we have a couple of overlay districts, Tim. Now, I thought one of, there's, there's one on Main Street, the Village District, is that an overlay?
No. We have, the, well, the Wetlands is an overlay district, so where you have Wetlands, the Wetlands ordinance describes what the definition of Wetlands, the buffers and so forth, and that whole. Wetlands and buffers comprise the Wetlands District. So anywhere there's Wetlands, this whole district and its permitted uses, or prohibited uses, gets overlaid, geographically overlaid in an area. Then we have another smaller one, Danville Road, where Cumberland Farms is, Walton Road, a pretty small area that typically had mixed u, residential and commercial mixed uses. Then when it got changed to just C1, the residential uses were grandfathered, but now, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, we kind of reverted back to allow both. And so that's a small geographic overlay. I really centered a district, I think we started talking about an overlay, but in the zoning that defines that, we define geographic boundaries, and we define its own set of uses. So it really, I think we, at some point, we took the word overlay district out, and it really is a, kind of its own self-contained district.
Jim, what, what he's saying, to keep it really simple, to, you, you don't have to deal with an overlay district. What I'd like to introduce to the board is the idea for the next meeting. Look at the uses that are allowed and the uses that are prohibited, and what the permits are for that zoning district along 125. Look at that list now, within the table of uses, right? And think of uses that would be palatable to introduce into that particular district.
Okay.
That aren't included now. This is how we could deal with it in a manner that's easy for everyone to understand and would help to really transform that, that district into what it needs to adjust to in order to stay viable and sustainable. And, and the thing is to allow for the growth down there that the town wants. So you either need a special permit for a use, or a site plan approval for a use. Certain uses may only end up needing a building permit issued, if this board agrees to put something like that forward. But it would be great to be able to accomplish this within the timeframe we're dealing with for an introduction to a number of uses that we'd want to introduce to that district for next Springtown meeting. So that, that means we'd have to be ready for public hearings in late November, December, into the first part of January, to be ready for that.
So do you think you could come back next time with, with some, and give, send us some material?
Yeah, and everybody really look at it, Tim, and, you know, you have tons of experience in this stuff, but really look at, you know, what uses would be palatable, and then we can hash that out and have a deliberation on it, and, you know, agree to everything. We don't want to, we're not out to change the world. We're not out to ram anything down anybody's throat. We're just trying to create a much more viable, economically sustainable, you know, more, more attractive, you know, multi-use area for 125. You know, really take advantage of what's going on in today's world, and, you know, really help transform that. And I think, with, I think, with the introduction of potable water and large quantities now being introduced to that district, now is the time. We're on the cusp, you know, of creating that future now, and we have one of the services necessary, and if we work hard enough, and the town wants it, we may very well be able to get into the next realm of infrastructure improvement, and that would be the introduction of sewer capacity within that district. And that would be, in all likelihood, talking about being able to migrate that stuff into the Havrel plant, which is underutilized, and Havrel is looking for customers to add to that.
That sounds good. So we'll come up with something for next time and have a discussion on that. And one of the things that would be useful, I think, would be
No, not solid waste.
To clearly understand what's going on with potable water, the timeframe. I mean, I have a rough idea, but is that something, where, where would we get that?
Do you want, well, we, the board's been participating in, obviously, water workshops, and I can give you an update as of this past month, very quickly, next time. Yeah, five-minute thing, yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
All right.
That sounds good, and, and we can discuss your item that you, you brought up next time, too.
Now, I'm concerned about timing, because I know it has to come.
Yeah.
I like the.
That's why I said, we, we need to come up with zone, if we have any proposed zoning changes, you have one, anybody has one? You know, and we can check with Dee and see if she has any. We need to be ready to, to roll here pretty soon. Before you know it, it'll be December, so.
Yeah, and remember, a couple of years ago, we did the, the noise ordinance in pretty quick fashion, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now is the prime time, you know, it's post-Labor Day, and we have a couple of months to get everything together to advertise for public hearings and meet those timeframes.
And as a matter of fact, I'll put it as a specific item, zoning ordinances, and if anybody has any, we'll try to come in and start the process, you know, as early as we can.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Having done that, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:51.
Wow.
Excellent.
Excellent.